All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, January 26th at 7:00 PM. We are meeting in the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room. We do have a quorum present, so at this time, I'd like to actually mention that is anybody else besides Lake Cam recording this meeting? That said, the first item on our agenda is a Form A plan for 13 and 15 Main Street, represented by Dave Madigan.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name's Dave Madigan from Madigan-Lansvings. So what we have here is a Form A plan. Currently, it's two existing Form A lots. They are owned by the same principal owner. And what we're doing here is conveying at the rear of Lot 2, we're conveying out parcel A, 6,200 square feet, and we're going to combine it with Lot 1. We're not changing the frontages. We're not trying to get another lot. We're just simply conveying parcel A to Lot 1 as shown on the plan. Everything else is similar.
Okay. Uh, so as I alluded earlier, that, you know, because Lot 2 has a large business structure underway, under construction, that already went through site plan review, and we approved it at very close to 50% lot coverage, which is allowed without going for any of the density bonuses that were in place at that time. So with the removal of parcel A and seceding that to Lot 1, we need to know that we didn't drop underneath the 50% lot coverage.
Okay, and I can briefly speak to that. So as you see, parcel A, it's pretty much all wetlands as is, but there is a small piece of upland, that little triangle by lot, by wet flag W4. Out of that 6,200 square feet, I believe from memory, it's 800 square feet of upland that we're taking away from Lot 2. The calculations have been run. It's my understanding that Xenith Engineering is going to submit a letter or is in the process of submitting a letter certifying that it did not go below the upland.
It did not exceed the 50% lot coverage with removing that 800 square feet of upland.
Exactly. If Mr. Bissonette would like to speak to that, he's more than welcome, but I think, you know, I've gone over this with Niles because that did come up. But I think they're either sending a letter or that they're more than willing to send a letter.
Okay. All right. Mark, do you have anything else on this one?
Uh, no, but I think Jamie has some.
We have a letter typed and already drafted and stamped. I'll get it into Mark's hands tomorrow so that you can complete the file on it, but it should not be an issue.
Okay. Anybody on the planning board would like to speak to this?
I'm just curious as to the reason behind this. It's because, you know, these lots, the way these lots are set up, it seems clear cut, and now you're taking a little portion in the back that...
We want to keep that lot 1 above the three, the three acre threshold.
And so, actually, to backtrack, the piece that shows the Mass Highway chunk, that originally wasn't found. So after this process started, this was realized, so you're just trying to get it up to the right acreage to keep it at that mixed-use zoning.
Correct. So there is a plan on record of these two lots that show Massachusetts Commonwealth piece as part of Lot 1, and that's the way the assessors show it to this day. After further research of the state highway layouts, we discovered that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts actually owns that parcel. So that would have put us under...
It's not an easement, it's actually separate ownership.
It is correct. So now we're conveying this parcel A to Lot 1 to get it above the three acre threshold. It still leaves Lot 2 above the three acre threshold. So it's kind of a corrected plan that will go on record to correct the previous plan.
And I'm going to just kick back to you guys. There's that one little thing in our bylaws, and I don't think it affects you at all, but two opposing lot lines, you're at like 50 point something feet, I think there, or is it more? It's hard to tell.
It's more than 50 because I believe Lakeville has a requirement that you have to keep a strip of land above the 50 to count toward area, so we intentionally did that.
Yep.
Yeah. It's 50.24 on the slash, but parallel and perpendicular, it's 50 feet.
Right.
We didn't want to create a little sliver.
Right. Okay. That said, I'd like to make a motion to approve these A and R plans contingent upon the receipt of the letter from the engineer confirming that the lot coverage of the revised Lot 2 plan does not affect the 50% lot coverage density bonus requirements.
Certainly.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
So after we get the letter, we'll sign the bylaws.
Yep, that's fine.
Take care of all that.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for 415 Millennium Circle.
Good evening. Jamie Bissonette, Xenith Consulting Engineers, for the record. We're back in front of you tonight from our meeting. I think we were here about a month ago. Since that time, we've been in front of the Conservation Commission, as discussed, and we received, we did receive an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. At the board's request, we also added in some overflow parking in the rear gravel area. There's 20 spaces that meet Lakeville's requirement for parking there, and I think that those were essentially the two main items civil-wise that I needed to address. If you count lighting as a civil issue, we also had a lighting request.
We were provided that in our package as well.
And so we had that. I know that Mark's gone over that. I believe that he was comfortable with it. I can try to address any questions on that. And then the other item was odor, which we've brought the engineer who's in charge of the design and handling of that, in case there are any questions that the board has any at all. He's the person that would give you the answers on it. So I'm happy to entertain any questions on this if you have any.
Could you, just for the record, I believe we were told there were a couple of minor changes. Could you just show us on the...
Sure, absolutely. So this is the landscaping plan, but on the actual layout plan, you'll find that this is the parking that was added in the rear. There's a note on the layout plan that says 20 proposed overflow spaces to be striped. So they're just going to paint them. It's going to, we're going to keep it as gravel. There's no point in asphalt in it right now. We're hoping in the next year, it's going to become building. As far as the lighting is concerned, we have both a photo metric and cut sheets for the product itself. This has no light going over the property lines, and also from the cut sheets, you can see they're dark sky compliant.
It's all just building lights, no pole lights?
That's correct, yeah.
And they're way back from the property lines?
They are, yeah. Yeah, so...
And it's, it's not like you have residential areas abutting that that would have issue.
Exactly.
And the numbers aren't very high.
No, they're, yeah. I steered the same thing.
Most retail places would have much, particularly national, change with much higher numbers.
And honestly, this is the first time I've seen one of these enclosed with a site plan, and I thought it was fascinating. So I'm assuming they plug in whichever style of light that they have, and they, and they put that in, and the metric shows you almost like a graph where the light, how far the light goes out from the building. So that was pretty interesting to see.
Yeah.
I think that'd be nice to have a bit more, to be honest.
I provided one when I went in front of the planning board.
Yes, you did.
Well, that was prior to my time, so it was pretty good to see.
Uh, no, that's great. We appreciate that. I just, I have no other concerns. Do you have any other concerns, Mark?
Uh, no.
Um, just going forward, I know you've brought up that there's going to be probably a future expansion.
Yep.
Uh, we've talked briefly about just changing the parking requirements for marijuana facilities to not really mirror warehouse.
Sure.
So it's just for future reference, when you guys do start the design process for that, we just up the parking from warehouse. We're not sure where we're going to be with it. Uh, yeah, I mean, you could probably get us on the timing if the bylaw changes, but it would be appreciated if we know that you just don't have parking spilling out into the street there or whatever, that you control it on the site.
Yeah, I think especially with this first phase, it's going to be a nice test for Dominic and his team to find out if their actual parking needs are going to be more than what they anticipate. They, they have a game plan where they've physically figured out how many employees to run each shift.
Yep.
But you're right, things change and things happen, so that's something that we can look at as well and find out if we have a need because he obviously wants to provide that.
Yeah, and it's, and again, I'm not singling you out as much as we're, we're addressing a problem that already exists somewhere else. And the things that we see are, you know, a guy like Jamie, an engineer, would design a plan to fit your highest shift. But what we see in other facilities is it seems like they're working on the building in perpetuity. So they need to fit highest shift plus 20 to 40 tradesmen in their vehicles. So I don't think that that's going to be your case, but just figure on the high side when you do.
We understand. And then you're just like to mention too, we also own the property directly across the street too, so we have a little bit more room to spread our legs than maybe the next person that may have.
That's good.
Good. Excellent. All right. Anybody else from the planning board want to speak to us?
How big is that property across the street, square footage?
Well, it's probably about 7, 68,000 square feet.
Yeah, it's a large building.
It's a big, it's a big building.
It's the building right behind the building that had East Coast Fitness in it.
Yep, across from Mod Space.
Yep.
I do want to mention one other thing is that we received a comment letter from the town administrator, and there was one item that I think we discussed it a little bit at the last meeting, but was, it had to do with water allocations. So that, yeah, some of these facilities are using a large amount of water for the evaporators and other things that, equipment that they have in there, and that water allocations need to be approved by the board of selectmen for any increase over what was previously allocated for the building. So that, that process needs to go forward, and it's been challenging with at least one of our, our two businesses at one of the buildings. So I would recommend, I would have the, recommend that I have a condition here in a draft approval to, to address that issue unless...
Yeah, so if we voted tonight to approve your site plan, it would be contingent upon your water allocation from the board of selectmen.
I understand that. So in my day job, I do a lot with restaurants and supermarkets, and I will tell you that the water usage in some of the facilities I'm building, be it supermarkets or restaurants, are going to be using more water than we're using at the Twisted Growers location. I do understand the comment, and I understood, I understand that we have an applicant or someone trying to use a whole bunch of water. I'm not sure how they're getting their numbers, but our numbers are, are pre-dialed in, and we're like, you know, 5% of their numbers. So, you know...
Good.
Yeah, it'd be great. Because you're able to not have an issue.
Part of the issue for that other facility, I believe, is the RO system that they have that wastes a certain amount.
Yes, so like we have a chilling system, and if you, if you chill it, and it's in a recirculating system, you continue to use that bath of water, and there's like an antibacterial component of it, so you just continue using it, keeps recycling itself. If we didn't have that chilling system, you were doing something water-cooled, it'd be like opening up the garden spigot at your house and just letting it fly. We're not doing that, so I know that our application, I feel there won't be a problem, but I understand, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, it's just us, the board's in town, I'm trying to communicate, just so nobody kind of misses an I or a T in the best interest of the town, and I know you are, you're thinking that same way because you're working in town.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Okay. So we have the odor mitigation gentleman here, and I think he'd like to speak.
Definitely, please do.
How you doing? I'm Eric Gaff with PLW Engineers. So I'll just give you a brief summary of, of our approach for odor mitigation. Pretty straightforward. The whole, the way to keep, to mitigate odor and make sure you don't smell marijuana odors outside the building is to essentially keep the odors in the building, right? So what we do is essentially keep the building in a negative pressure, all the flower rooms around the perimeter, and then we keep the exhaust, the corridor in the middle in a negative pressure, so all the odors flow to the middle of the building, and then we exhaust from the, from the corridor and put carbon filtration in the exhaust ductwork. And that's pretty much it. And then what we do at the beginning of the project is keep testing the carbon to see how much it accumulates, to see the life expectancy of the carbon, and then from there on out, we know how long it'll last.
Maintenance plan, basically.
It's basically a maintenance plan, so it can last anywhere from six months to 18 months. So you just test it at the, you know, starting within the first three months, you start testing it, then you know, you know, how, how often you'll need to change them, and then you just put that in the maintenance plan.
Excellent. Thank you for addressing that. I know that's been an issue for some people.
That's, that's the biggest thing. Most, carbon works as long as you maintain it, so.
Yep.
And then as far as the, a lot of mistakes people are making, they'll, they won't keep the building in the right pressure, and if you open the loading dock, you'll get a gust of, of odors, and that's when you start getting complaints.
Yep. All right, excellent.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Just about this maintenance plan, so is that going to be included in any of the wording in the site plan review as well?
I can provide the process of testing. So basically, you, you test the carbon, you send it back to the factory, and they'll tell you how much, you know, how much life is left in the filter. So I can provide that, that documentation.
I just feel like that might be a sort of belt and suspender to talk about.
Yeah, definitely.
Like just to make sure that it's, it's recorded, that that's the plan.
Yeah, if you could put it as part of the, you know, if you could really simplify it just to say, you know, charcoal filters will be changed periodically as needed. You just have it put somewhere in the plan just to mitigate odor, and it'll be on copy that we sign and got approved.
Sure, no problem.
All right. Would anybody else like to speak to this? Any abutters here?
The only one that came to the meeting last time was Glenn, and Glenn is also our, he's the association president of our park. I immediately sent Glenn all this information and made my professional, you know, accessible to him as well. And I know that, you know, Glenn and I spoke in the term of the meeting and then after the meeting. He may not be here tonight just because, you know, we are giving him all the information and get access to the gentleman as well, and so it was kind of taken care of in between this, this meeting and the last meeting we had.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anybody else? Uh, Mark, we good with approving this tonight based on what we've seen, and do we need anything else?
Yeah, I just have, like I said, I got a draft of the approval with conditions such as occupancy permit. Prior to occupancy permit being issued for the building, the applicant shall submit and receive approval of a water connection application from the board of selectmen. You know, exterior lighting shall be dark sky compliant. Should you have any issues, revisit that with the thing. All signs shall comply. Handicap access and facilities shall comply with ADA. Any proposed changes shall be resmitted. So basically, it's the standard conditions, and that's it. And the latter condition about the charcoal filters shall be monitored and replaced as necessary.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan for 415 Millennium Circle with the conditions in our standard packet applicable with the water allocation requirements we just discussed, and I think that'll satisfy it. So that's my motion. Have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. As far as endorsement of the plans, when, when would we be looking at that? I don't know the, how this works.
So I think you probably should put something to the board of selectmen for the water allocation.
Yep, absolutely.
Uh, I think that's really the sticking point for us to sign the plan is just to make sure that something's in there, or at least with that contingency in there, do you guys know?
So the first thing is the approval next week will get signed and filed with clerk. There was a 20-day appeal period because it's approved under zoning, so it's that appeal period, after which then the board can sign the plans, but I recommend at least get the application in, the information for the water.
Yeah, we'll have that in next week.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in. Good luck. All right, next item on the agenda is 145 Rhode Island Road, a discussion regarding a two-lot subdivision.
Jamie Bissonette from Xenith Consulting Engineers, for the record. Thanks for having us on this. Tonight, we wanted to come in and just inform and talk to you guys about a, a small two-lot subdivision off Rhode Island Road. The Barrows family is, they're here. Basically, what they'd like to do is, they have a son and a daughter who are both present with family, and they each want to, they want to be able to develop a house lot for each one of them. So they had me take a look into a conceptual plan to see if it's even feasible to start proceeding with survey, wetland delineation, topography. This is the best way to get a feel for it without spending a lot of money and wasting a lot of time. And what I recommended was let's go and talk to the planning board like I have in the past, see if the planning board is, you know, in favor of us proceeding forward with this, and then if they are, then what we would do is we would then, you know, do the boundary survey, topography, and the things that are going to cost additional, additional money, and somewhat substantial to be able to hopefully get them to where they want to be, which is two lots with a private right-of-way. So what this brings down to is this, this is a lot with, with an existing dwelling on it. If you're driving on Rhode Island Road, it's kind of near the 79...
Familiar with it.
All right, perfect. The small parcel to the front...
Cemetery.
Cemetery, exactly. And so it's a wooded lot. The, everything that it shows has supposed to have nice soils on it. It dips down quite a bit into the back. It does have a little bit of flood plain, and I would expect some wetlands in the back here, you know, towards the bottom of the slope. That being said, you know, I think there's a chance for a nice, you know, a nice two-lot subdivision here in the making. What we have on this plan is a 50-foot height right-of-way with 20-foot paved, I'm sorry, with 14-foot paved. And what we're doing is we're showing the full 20-foot width there. Our intention would be to do 14-foot paved with the three-foot berms or a six-foot berm, depending upon how we would address drainage, like we've done on some of the other wafered subdivisions in town. Obviously, we would deal with drainage. In this case, I was, I was actually looking at trying to see if we could deal with it in the center of the cul-de-sac because it's going to be a natural area there. It'd be nice if we could do some stormwater infiltration in that area and then have an overflow that goes out and, and down towards the back. So that's kind of where my head was leaning, but before I get ahead of myself and I do soil testing and everything, I wanted to present this to the board. One of the things, I did talk with Mark, Mark and I had a nice conversation about it. We kind of went over some ideas. And we're open to suggestions from the board as well. One of the things we talked about was asking for a reduction in the width of the 50 foot to 40 feet. I know the history...
The right-of-way.
The right-of-way. The Lakeville Planning Board traditionally is like that because they're not worried about anybody ever trying to connect to it and add future road on, and, you know, it'd be a much harder process. They'd have to gain another 10 feet from one of the house lots to make that happen. And so I know years ago, the planning board used to look at that as a positive thing. In this case, what it would do is it'd be nice because it would give a little bit more land to, you know, the property owners, and it's not really needed inside the right-of-way. Another thing Mark and I talked about was possibly sliding the right-of-way to, and this plan orientation would be to the north, and try to offset the road a little bit to the south because of the slope that's on the northern side going downhill. But that would also give Lot 1 a little bit more room, you know, for space in the yard, and that would, that would be nice too. But that all being said, it seems like a pretty simple plan, and we just wanted to get some feedback if the board would be, you know...
Yep. So it's kind of hard to tell, but I can, I think I can make out you've shown two front yard circles.
Yes.
What are the acreages of the two lots?
So we have one that is just meeting it, and then the other one is just about two acres, just, just shy of two acres.
Uh, I was kind of surprised to see the cul-de-sac circle because the last couple we've seen like a hammerhead.
And I tried doing the hammerhead, but when it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit. And what happened here and...
You'd be going off the right side of the property?
Yeah, I spoke with the Barrows. Even if we took and we turned it, it didn't set up nice for driveways coming off of it. It just would have looked odd. So I explained to them, I said, there might be an opportunity here for us to utilize this, but put in some kind of a drainage system in the bottom. I know the fire chief won't have a problem with a cul-de-sac. Not that he has one with hammerheads either. He's been great with both, but, but yeah, we, we went this route on this one.
Yep. Uh, and I, I don't have a lot. I'll, I'll say that, yeah, I think it's a fine use of the property. I would expect you to come back with, you know, a working plan and, you know, barring any major incidents or whatever, I, I think that it would probably work for the town.
Okay.
Uh, that's it. I'm going to, Jack, you have it?
Jamie, does this butt up to the back of the golf course?
No, this, this is actually Mr. Simmons, the tree. Uh, this is the tree.
Marking Bird Hill.
Marking, Marking Bird Hill, right there.
Okay.
But it is, it's pretty close to you.
Yeah.
Um, so now, are you showing, you said the 50-foot you're showing with, on the plan here?
Yeah, the right-of-way we have.
You are showing 50-foot, and you're still getting that 160...
Yes, yes, we are.
Circle.
But again, please keep in mind, this isn't a definitive survey. What we do is, and the Barrows know, we took the assessor's lines from GIS, and this is LiDAR topo, so it's, you know, it's digitally flown, so it's approximations right now. If we do a boundary survey, the way I try to set it up for my clients, we'll do, we'll go in the order in which we think if we find a fault that we can stop, and it's the least money out of their pocket.
Right.
So we still need to do a boundary survey here, but there's, there's definitely some wiggle room if we need to, as long as the lot's similar.
Okay. I mean, my main concerns are, you know, access, make sure if you're trying to get the 14-foot, you know, speak to the fire department, get a sign off from him, definitely, especially with that circle. Also, just, I hope they're aware that the town's not looking to accept any roads, they'll be responsible for snow plowing, you know, school buses won't be able to go down there. So, you know, just let them be aware of all that.
Yeah, so what, part of what we've done in the past, and I know you've been here for, is roadway maintenance agreements. So there'll be one that we'll present to you or an association of types. This will remain private, so the town would have no responsibility for it whatsoever. And we would definitely have 20 feet of passable, drivable material because that's fire code.
Okay.
It's just 14-foot paved.
You have a gravel shoulder on the side.
They could get a last truck in there, right?
That's, yeah, we can definitely get a truck around that radius.
So I also notice, even though it's very straight on your plan, Route 79 is at a bit of an angle there, and that's...
Yep.
of an angle there, and that's, from a planning board, that'd be probably a waiver for that angle of the road coming off the main road if it's more than 10 degrees or something like that?
Yeah, there is a percentage, and it may be, once we get the actual alignment. And there's a chance that in the front, if we needed to, and I can talk to Mark or the board itself, we could come in with a preliminary, you know, a Form B if the board would like, but there's a chance that we could cock the beginning of it to be more perpendicular to that right-of-way if we need be.
Well, I don't have a problem with it, as much as I'm just looking at the right-of-way that you've drawn.
Yeah.
It looks like you're also having to comply with the shafts, the state highway.
Yeah.
Radius is there, that's why that.
Yep.
As you say, the northern orientation of this plan shows such a wide strip from the layout of the road to the property line, it's just, you kind of lose it from that.
You do.
Sweep.
Yep, you do.
Which is unfortunate.
Yeah, and again, when we get a true survey, it might be, hopefully it'll be better.
Okay.
All right.
What do you think, Jack? They'll come back to us with a better plan and we'll be able to work with?
Do you guys recommend the Form B on this? Just go definitives?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
If, you can come back once you have something, you know, we can meet, and if we want to discuss it with the board before that you actually file.
Okay. Yeah, if there's any major issues, too, I'll let the board know, or I'll let Park know definitely so that you guys, you know, are made aware, but as long as they give me the go-ahead, we'll proceed forward and hopefully see you in the next couple of months.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Do you guys have any questions?
Exactly, that's it.
All right. Thank you.
Good luck, folks. Thanks for bringing, I think it was our youngest attendee.
I'm coming with you guys.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good day, Jimmy.
Next item on the agenda is to discuss using Serpent hours to update the zoning map. So this is something you've had a discussion with them and.
Yeah, so they said they completely do it for the number of hours that are allocated to the planning board, probably even less than what is normally set aside by the select board for the planning boards, but we don't really have a, I don't know of the base map. I have a couple different ones in my office, and the more up-to-date one, I'm not sure it's entirely accurate. I think it's mostly accurate, but the overlay districts are kind of all these, they just show them like this cross-hatched, and they really should just be pulled out on separate, so you can really see what are the true limitations of the overlay districts. So they can create, they can pull them out as a separate page, or they can include them in like a wall.
An inset, almost.
Yeah, like an inset, exactly. So, yeah, so I think that would be a useful exercise for us to have done.
Okay, so I make a motion for the planning board to approve the usage of the Serpent hours to update the zoning map.
Second.
Just with discussion? Does this use up all the, because I know we have super working on the housing production plan, does this use up the rest of it?
No, because the housing production plan is a separate budgeted item.
Okay.
So.
This isn't everything.
This doesn't affect that at all.
And then, I mean, I, I know this is probably separate, but I would love to see the zoning map on our GIS as an overlay.
Well, once we get an updated, you know, map, it'll be digital, so we'll be able to post it on our websites. We'll be able to pull out the overlay district, so people can just click on and pull up.
This would get that.
This would get that done.
That's excellent.
So people can see, oh, just that overlay district.
Good.
Something like that.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second? And does that conclude discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the December 8, 2022 minutes meeting. By my set.
So there was just one item. I found Kathy Murray, planning board clerk, was also in attendance, and then it was pointed out to me today that the last page on our next meeting scheduled for January 12, 2023, the date, the year, so, other than that, it looked good to me. So I'll motion to approve the minutes with those two noted corrections.
So the correction is to show that Kathy was present at that meeting?
Yep.
And then the date that you mentioned?
Yes.
Okay. Did you make a second, Jack?
Yes.
So I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes from December 8 as noted changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is to review correspondence.
You just have a few buddy city and town notices, nothing of significance, so.
Oh, and if you, so Mark and I actually both attended a site walk in the middle.
Oh, yes, that's right. We had talked about that at the last board meeting, that there would be the MEPA site walk for the warehouse for the land at the town line behind.
The old drive-in theater.
Yeah, kind of just behind that. And so we walked through the site, and it's a wooded site, it'll access off of a roadway. I don't remember what it's called, but it's adjacent to the marijuana.
That was Mill Street, so, but they're not planning on using, that was proposed as like a secondary option. They are proposing to come directly out onto Harding Street, which is Route 44, and it's.
At the, at the drive-in entrance.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's, it's a substantial project, up to 6,000 square feet, three buildings.
600.
600,000 square feet, yes.
In three buildings.
So. And then a lot of wetlands, very close to some sensitive areas.
So there'll be some correspondence in a full MEPA report coming?
Yeah, I, yes. It's a pretty substantial, yeah. There's some environmental sensitive things. There was a couple neighbors out there who were explaining different aspects of the site to the MEPA representative, so I think they were well aware of that, you know.
What's the turnaround usually for them to respond with their report?
Again, it depends.
Magnitude of the project or magnitude of the site.
Magnitude of the project, who's proposing it, what kind of, how quickly can they get MEPA to do?
So a high-low range?
Well, so they'll probably issue a scope, but then they'll have to put together a report. I don't know. So again, they only posted the first few pages of the filing, so I don't know whether they filed a complete MEPA report or what they, they filed like an environmental notification. So I think what happens is MEPA then gives them a scope, and then they have to write the full.
So it's really just starting a process?
Yes. Right, but it is, it is a challenging site, but this is a big company that actually I've reviewed some of their projects before, so.
Well, if you hear any more updates on that, we'd love to hear them.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
MEPA means what to me?
MEPA is?
Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Not Protection Act?
No, I think it's policy, but it's, but there's the MEPA, yeah.
Alphabet soup.
Yes.
Any other correspondence other than that?
No, just a few small things from the buddy and towns, and that's all for right now.
So I see we're going to endorse the site plan for 348 Bevick Street. I'll make the announcement that our next meeting is on February 9, 2023, at the Lakeville Police Station at 7:00 PM. I'm going to assume that there's no other business coming before the planning board tonight?
Oh, may I just suggest a couple things?
Yeah, okay, you go first.
Sorry, I was just going to say, so we have Springtown meeting coming up. I don't think we have anything that we've been working on yet, but I'd like to see us try to get some marijuana parking requirements together.
I think we talked about that briefly at a previous meeting, Mark, that we'd like to address the parking standards requirements for marijuana to make it not mirror warehouse. If we could.
What's that mean to me?
So if we could come up with some different calculations?
Mm-hmm, so I'll have to see what other cities and towns do, because again, it may depend on, and again, I'm not really familiar with how they, their operations work inside, why some employer facilities need so many more people than others. You know, maybe it's how they operate, maybe they break out some of their.
Well, it seems like when they have like a harvest, it's all hands on deck, at least, from what it seems. So if we could just maybe try to get that done, something we can review and just a better calculation so that.
Even if we don't make Springtown meeting, I think that's something we probably want to have at least going, so that if we didn't make the cut for Springtown meeting, because that's going to come up pretty quick with the public hearing process.
Right.
At least we could get it done and then rehold a public hearing for Fall Town Meeting if we have one.
But even if we just get a metric and he says this is what other towns are doing, I mean, it seems straightforward, I'm hoping, to just, because I think, you know, we have other ones coming, so.
And it could be something as simple as.
It could be based on square footage of.
Or even employee count, right, too? Because we have an employee count for, like, business.
Well, that's how it currently is. It's.
But.
Person on the largest.
Highest shift plus 10 or 20% is, I think, what it probably needs to be, because of, like I said, that additional, you know, workers working on site, maintenance people, other things that aren't part of the worker shift that still need some parking.
And are they bringing employees from other sites for a specific time of month, you know, like for whatever purpose, maybe?
Well, that would be covered by highest shift, though, because that. Were you going to bring one up to Mark, or were you going to bring up something?
I was not going to bring up anything else for town meeting with one exception, which is Jamie will probably bring a road for acceptance. I forget what the name is. It's where he lives, and it's the subdivision his father built. Jennifer Way, or Off of Jennifer Way.
Is it Jamie's Way?
Jamie's Way, is that it?
That was when he came in about the wave, the trees.
Yes, he came in last summer wanting to do it, and I went out and inspected, and they had some work to correct, and so, and which apparently they've done, I will also have it inspected by the review engineer as well. But he indicated, when I met with Jamie last week, that they wanted to bring that forward for town meeting, so.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, just one more. Inclusionary zoning by law, so I actually came up with a draft based off of another town that I saw, and I was hoping maybe, Mark, you could throw out a couple different town options and.
Well, we can sit, send it to me, and we can sit down and go through it, okay?
That way, because, I mean, that's another one I don't think is going to make spring, but I'd like to maybe aim for fall.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the one thing I wanted to mention, since we're on camera, was that the Community Preservation Committee is having its public hearing on the plan that they put together on Monday at 7:00 PM, right here at the police station, so.
Public input. What do you want done with your CPA funds? Show up.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's the only other thing.
Okay, that's good to know. So that's this coming Monday at 7:00 PM?
Yep.
So at the police station meeting room, the CPC will be meeting to discuss their financial plans, and where the potential money that's been brought in from taxation will go. So if anybody wants to show up, give some input, I'm sure it's very welcomed.
Yeah, it's not on specific projects, but it's on the various goals and objectives of the, of the.
The committee.
Yeah, of the committee and of the, the type of funding that the committee can approve, so.
Okay, excellent. So that said, make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion in a second? All in favor? Well, I didn't really call that, just, everybody voted, but, no. So meeting is adjourned.